Benefit. I'll start that over.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna get up or we're gonna go next door.
I'd like to call the Eastline Board of Education regular meeting to order. The first order of business is for executive session to discuss the proposed non-union, non-union unaffiliated benefit wage schedule.
I would like to make a motion to, into that executive session.
I'll second it.
For the superintendent and Marianna Stevens.
And Emily. Just because we don't want to be lonely.
Okay. We're moving to a second section. I'm going to call the Eastline Board of Education regular meeting back to order. We did come to order at six oh two for executive session to discuss the proposed non-union unaffiliated benefit wage. Now, I want to start with a pledge of allegiance to everyone who lies.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business. Thank your time. First, I have three minutes. So is there anyone who would like to, you know, speak first? And if you can state your name and address.
Come on, I'm excited, but get out of your house.
We don't need your email.
Hi, my name is Siam Kara. Bye, harvest wise. Thank you for having me here today. As we all know, people such as me really want middle school sports back to be a part of Elms. I highly support middle school sports and think it will benefit our school community. Elm is one of the 25 schools in southeastern Connecticut with two or fewer middle school schools. Please consider making middle school sports part of our culture. Ever since the birth of our community, sports have made an impact on hundreds of lives. They have provided jobs and friendships that have lasted a lifetime. In our amazing town, we are known for so much, our beaches, seafood, and amazing academic achievements. But most importantly, our amazing sports and sports achievements. We embed teams and players just from Eastline, good ones, speakable language, and sports. Sports. In Eastline, Connecticut, we are a very non-controversial and united community. And for me, one of the many reasons for this is due to sports. Sports have not just connected people in our community, but all around the world. This is a really captivating thing. Sports are not just important for unity and being social, but they can provide very important lessons and teach very important things. Truly, sports can help you reach your fitness goals and maintain a healthy weight. However, they can also encourage healthy, just healthy decision-making, such as non-smoking and drinking. Sports have so many hidden health benefits. Just playing sports can scientifically prove into improved confidence. As a very dedicated soccer player, I know how prejudiced and important sports can be. It would mean the world to me and everybody and every student at Elm's to bring sports back. Thank you.
My name is Cash and I'm third grader. Enjoy watching my brother play middle school basketball too.
So much.
I'm a seventh grader at Eastline Middle School. The past fall, when I played on the middle school soccer team and the middle school basketball team. I'm here tonight to share my positive experiences playing on these teams and to encourage this sport to support and fund these middle school teams. In addition to participating in middle school sports, I also participate in town-sponsored soccer and basketball leagues. However, the middle school experience is completely different. It is a craving for me to bond with my classmates in school. Middle school sports have given me a chance to create friendships and cross-sponsor students in different grades, like it would be when I play high school. With town sports, we're traditionally playing with members of our own grade. Middle school sports have been, was a way to have fun after school. During the winter, I'd go to the gym after school and play basketball with friends. Out against exercise and socialization as opposed to going home and getting in electronics or social media. We had to travel and watch Telly games. This was one of the best parts of middle school basketball. I was also able to see what other middle schools are like and meet their students. So many schools around us have middle school basketball, and it was fun to compete against them. It's also exciting to have so many Eastline middle school students come to the games and cheer us, our team on, and show their school pride. Taking away these sports would take away the fun, friendship, and team building. Coke was tough on all of us. We had little in-person school and we had no sports. We had very little social interaction. Middle school sports made it seem memorable and it allowed us to be kicked again and have something productive to do after school. They gave us something to look forward to at the end of the school day. They gave some things back that I would truly enjoy. You have the choice to support these programs that truly benefit me and my classmates. Please don't take these middle school sports and positive experiences away from us again. I hope we reconsider keeping these middle school sports for next year. Thank you.
My name is Kurt Casher. I'm a student at Eastline Middle School. Last year, I came to speak at the board meeting for middle school sports. I told you that middle school sports will build relationships and start new friendships. I also told you that it would improve the school community. First of all, the school community improved a ton. Having middle school sports was probably the best experience of my life. I loved playing in games and seeing my classmates in the stands. It was a great delight to have people behind me cheering me up. This definitely improved the school community. Also, on the bus rides to away gigs, we had a great team bond and built our relationships even better. I went to the girls' basketball team's playoff games. There were so many people in the crowd and so much school spirit was shown. They're so gracious. Next, I said that we've built relationships and start new ones. I made so many new friends and improved other relationships. Many of the improved relationships were from new friends. Were from kids in other grades who I don't see on a regular basis. If you remember, last year I came here with one friend who was my support or speak to. Now I have this. Lastly, here's a chart of what other schools and universities offer in South East Connecticut. In these towns, we are one of 25 towns to have two or fewer middle school sports. Also, all the other 24 towns have middle school boys and girls basketball. Also, I think that it is clear that four towns, it's small towns, if you work without a school, still have more middle school sports than this one. Just like Salem, who comes to ours, high school, who comes to the Eastline basketball. We need to have more pride in our school community and more pride in middle school sports. Please reconsider your decision of cutting middle school sports and bring back sports in the future.
Yeah, my name is Thompson Cora. And I'm an eighth grader at Eastline, and I played on the middle school team this year. So I'm just here to share some of my positive experiences. During the season, I met a lot of new friends, especially from different age groups. Going into the season, I didn't know most of the kids, and now I can call out my friends. And I stayed busier than the average winter. Usually, I just played travel. And this year, I had a whole extra team to play for. So it's just a good way to stay busy and not stay at home more. Playing that much basketball is going to improve skills for the kids and improve the program in general. By just getting more opportunities to play. And by playing with older and younger kids, also an opportunity to make friends and improve your skills. So that's also really important. You got a different coach than you're used to, which I enjoyed a lot because you get to hear from someone else. And you also get new competition and playing for, playing against other kids of different ages from other towns. And the thing that was most shocking to me is looking at the chart and seeing that all these other towns have other sports like boys' and girls' basketball and soccer teams and all that, and we had it this year, and it was great. But the fact that we might not be going into another season with that is just, is shocking to me because it was such a good experience. And the last thing I would like to say is the bus rides were a great opportunity to bond with classmates and friends and just kind of catch up with everyone. And, you know.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mayla Casher. I live in southeast Connecticut. When I stand up here, I didn't know whether I should take the approach of the heartstrings and the social emotional well-being. And right here, listening to these kids right here, this should pull at your heartstrings right here. This is what they want. So for me, I'm going to come up here and, again, I have a letter and I will send it to you that talks about teen depression and the camaraderie that it brings when they get to travel on the buses with their teams that they don't get to have with AAU or the Parks and Rec. You don't have kids coming and watching those types of games. You have them coming to watch their school and the pride. But some of you are going to want to hear the financial cost and what that's going to do for us. So the one thing that I want to clear up is that if we add middle school, middle school sports, we were told we will have to lay off teachers. My estimated cost is that it would cost about $12,000 to run a boys' and girls' basketball program. This is about 0.03% of our $34 million education budget. We cannot hire a quarter of a teacher for that price. So I don't think that we should talk about laying off teachers or increasing class sizes because of that. Since it might be too late for soccer, I'll run the estimated cost of basketball for boys and girls. But keep in mind, soccer would be slightly cheaper due to the fact that they would have less games. Middle school inter-scholastic sports coaches cost $3,548 times two for the boys' and girls' teams. That's $7,096. Referees, it's an approximate $200 times 13 games because you need them for both the boys and girls. That's $2,600. Buses, games are closed, so the estimated cost that we got from M&amp;J Bus Company is $150 times 13 trips, which is $1,950, and volunteers to run the clog and the scoreboard. That's a total cost of $11,646. The other misconception that we are being taught is that kids are missing practices and games during basketball for town or AAU. This is simply not true. Middle school sports are after-school, so they don't interfere with town and rec programs. And we can't even get into the gyms until 6 o'clock at the elementary schools because of the after-care programs. I do believe that there were a few isolated cases where players missed a practice due to hockey or once in a while for soccer. But again, those were isolated incidences, and we all know that things happen in everyday life where things are going to come up. But keep in mind, the administration thinks that the cross-country program is highly successful, and it is. But remember, they have two practices a week, and the kids don't need to compete in the races when they go to the races. As far as the kids not being interested in middle school soccer, I think it's really difficult to judge that and gauge that given the poor rollout that there was last year. Despite my son coming to speak last year at a board meeting last June, on June 21st, we got together, waited to hear from anyone, received a wonderful letter from Mr. Newton. And he wrote the letter, and we were encouraged that we were going to be able to have middle school soccer. But on July 20th, nothing, not a follow-up email, not a phone call, nothing, a whole month later. And then again, emails continued to start again. What's going to happen? Nothing. It wasn't until September 9th that we, yes.
Right, 3:40.
Okay. So that in September 9th is when we finally received a survey going out, asking for people who were interested in middle school soccer. So from June 20th to September 9th, to say that we had poor enrollment for soccer? Yeah, I think that you guys can understand why we had poor enrollment for soccer. And it was only offered to seventh and eighth graders. So again, can we offer it to fifth and sixth graders? Or, you know, right now, soccer for the fall? Town has already had their triumphs. I mean, what do we want to do here? So again, I could go on and on and talk to you about this, but we are Eastline. Let's be committed to these kids and take pride in our community because we love Eastline. We chose to live in Eastline because of the education and what they have to offer. But right now, it is a disappointment. Please reconsider.
Hello, my name is Todd Alvin. 23 St. Piper Lane Plaza. I am the current vice president and soon to be president of Eastline Youth Basketball. This past winter, we had more than 600 boys and girls from Eastline and Salem registered in our basketball program, which is far more participants than any other recreational sport out there. I also speak to you today as a member of the Park and Rec Commission. Father of three young boys, ages nine, six, and four, as well as a proud graduate of Eastline High School, class of 1996. My older brother graduated from Eastline in 1992, and he and his peers had no school sports. I did not, as I recall, middle school, middle school sports being taken from us after my sixth-grade year in 1990. My younger brother, who graduated two years after me, also did not have the privilege of playing sports in middle school because, again, our town did not offer them. Years later, some sports did come back. And all in all, the one constant, since I graduated from Eastline Middle School, what 30 years ago, is the unfortunate, is the unfortunate give and take of middle school athletic opportunities. Just working off the chart that I was given and some of you received, you can see that it documents that 24 neighboring towns and what athletic programs they offer their children. Adam Killingworth is the only school district listed that offers all 10 sports to their children. And of the 24 districts listed other than Eastline, the average number of sports offered to their middle school students is 5.96 or six programs per school. We offer two. We're the only district that does not offer basketball for boys and for girls. These are not conversations we should be having. We are Eastline. We should never be last. We offer the best education. We hire the best teachers. And we hire the best school administrators to make difficult decisions from time to time. Our community is a first-class community filled with educated and passionate professionals who raise, who choose to raise their families in this town to have the best or to at least be given the platforms to allow us to be the best. This board was voted on by our community to find ways to say yes and not no. This is not a difficult decision. No pun intended, but this is a layoff. It's slammed up. This should not be a budget issue of 24 other districts can find a way. I watched close to a dozen boys and girls' middle school basketball games last year with my children, J.B. and Varsity. And I can tell you, based on the participation from the student athletes, their coaches, the student section, and the families attending, there's not only a demand for these teams, but there is a need. Look no further than the atmosphere of the gym the day the girls won the league championship last year. The fact we are having these conversations months following that special day in shame. Please do not consider the recreational basketball program we offer as a legitimate excuse for not providing middle school basketball. Please do not consider the travel basketball program we offer as a legitimate excuse for not providing middle school basketball. These three programs are apples and oranges. And in my opinion, the middle school program should be viewed as the best and the first choice for middle school athletes for many of the reasons you will hear or have heard tonight. As the next president of Eastline Youth Basketball, you have my full support in adding the middle school basketball program back regardless of how it affects the travel and/or recreational basketball program. Thank you.
I am Nat Duker, Seven Derris Ridge, Eastline. And my son played on the basketball team and soccer team last year for middle school. A lot of the points I would make have already been made, but I can just reiterate that our town obviously seems like an outlier in this regard as far as not offering at least a couple more sports than we do for middle school level kids. I think middle school sports are very different than some people have already discussed, but it's a different experience they get. It's an after-school activity that goes directly from school. So for a lot of kids, that just makes it easy and it makes it more doable for a lot of families to do that than trying to bounce around on the weekends and driving this way and that way. The games provide transportation for the bus that also makes it easier for these kids and for a lot of families to actually have their kids participate. And then I think, you know, the camaraderie that they build and the different age groups being involved gives them a good experience and a good lead-in to what's going to be their high school experience where you're competing for spots on a team with multiple age levels. And also just meeting new kids and learning how to play together. It also gives them different coaches to experience, which, you know, in the rec league, there's a lot of good parents who are out there doing the coaching, but you never know exactly what you're going to get. And some of it changes year to year. And they could join these teams in the middle school and get a whole different experience. Maybe you have a different position on the team or maybe you'd be somewhere different on the depth chart than they are in their town team or the rec team or the travel team. So, you know, it gives them a whole different level of experience, I think. As far as our finances, I already kind of went over that, but it seems, I mean, just, I don't know your whole budget, obviously. A whole line by line for the school budget, but it seems like such a minimal cost for something that all these other towns somehow find a way to do. And our tax base should be enough to find money for this too. Seems to be a shame that, that we wouldn't. So that's my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Scott, I'm a Forester, finally. So I'm here today to address and ask for reconsideration of the Eastline public schools cutting soccer and basketball from the middle school sports program. A little bit of background, I'm a sixth-grade science teacher in Connecticut at the Jared Elliott Middle School. It's my 21st year teaching. And of those 21 years teaching, 20 of them I have spent also coaching middle school sports. At the middle school, I've coached softball for 10 years. I've coached, assistant coached basketball for the boys' team. And for the past 19 years, I've been doing the girls' soccer team there. I, I do a question at the start of the day of my classes. And this past week, I posed this question to my students. What are your thoughts on why you think there should or should not be middle school sports? I like to start off the class with a discussion. I have 76 students in all, and all of them responded that they feel there should be middle school sports. A lot of the reasons were similar, to make friends, to hang out with friends, to keep kids healthy, to keep kids active, and to get and keep kids in shape. Others, other responses were a little bit more in-depth. I think there should be sports that let kids have fun and compete and be able to hang with each other after school. I think there should be sports because sometimes kids aren't able to play at home, and they want to play sports, and they might not have the opportunity to play games with others. Another student said, I think there should be sports because some people have to do these sports while their parents are at work, and some kids can't get the opportunity to play sports after school. Just recently, I was at my first orchestra concert at the middle school, and it was great. While I was there, I noticed the Eastline Middle School's mission statement. "These line middle school communities dedicated to lifelong respect and equal opportunity for all." I decided to read further into the mission statement in the least about students and student learning. Least about students, where all students are given dignity, respect, and equal opportunities to develop their potential and individuality in support of environment. Eastline Middle School strives to provide a curriculum with wide variety of developmentally appropriate learning spaces fostering excellence. By eliminating a majority of the sports programs at the middle school, is the Eastline Public Schools really providing equal opportunities to develop students' potential and provide a wide variety of learning experiences for fostering excellence? The sports programs that Eastline offers for their kids outside of school, like basketball and soccer is great, but it's not the same. You can't compete with multiple grade levels in basketball and soccer. There isn't much opportunity as well. These also involve, there's also a lot of time and financial equipment involved, commitment involved with these sports programs after school. There are also other programs like premier soccer, premier basketball, and those cost thousands of dollars. And, and to make those teams. And is it fair and equitable for families to say those options for your kids? Those are the options for your kids besides middle school sports. Many other surrounding communities have a lot of middle school sports, which you've heard. Jared Elliott has eight different sports programs to choose from. Waterford, I know, has 10. And there are many more districts with robust, robust, sorry, robust sport programs at the middle school. And a lot of the students that I've had in the past will play soccer in their rec programs. And they decide to run cross-country at the middle school, or they decide to play field hockey because they don't have those rec programs outside for those different activities. It is upsetting to me that these important opportunities and experiences would be cut. In the budget, there's a lot of money allocated for SEL programs. One of Eastline Public School's stated goals is to monitor, assess, and support student social and emotional development. Sports programs offered by public schools are already built-in SEL programs, and I would argue are some of the best.
Scott, Scott, we're at three and a half, so if I can.
All right. Students that participate have a better connection to the school and become invested in the school community. It can help build strong friendships across grade levels, build self-confidence both academically and athletically, and create worthwhile leadership opportunities for other players. My daughter, Sadie, was in sixth grade, played on the girls' basketball team. She was reserved, she's reserved and sometimes lacks confidence in herself. Of being able to play for a different coach other than her dad and play with older, older girls in seventh and eighth grade was so important for her development and confidence. The girls in the team were very supportive of it, and this made a big difference in her development as a player. But there were other intangibles as well, as well as her confidence being boosted overall. I think it's in the best interest of this key programs to foster positive lifelong experiences for students. Middle school sports should be a priority for the social emotional health of students at Eastline Middle School. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Nobody else? Can I just steal my son's three minutes for 20 seconds? Literally 20.
You actually can. Sorry, it's, we actually have three minutes per person. Apologies, there's no handing time over.
Did I use my two minutes?
He actually went over. Sorry. And, and the reason we have these rules because when people come in, we have to be consistent all the time with public comment or else it looks like we could be favoring one group versus another, and we can get feedback on that. And also, just so you understand, we can't respond to you at this time. It is a one-way conversation and really appreciate all the students coming in and hearing from you and the parents. Appreciate you.
Mr. Bowman, it's, it's hard for kids, it's hard for adults to, one, ask kids to stand up here to talk first and foremost. Two, to organize the dozens of things that we could have said or the points that we could have driven home here. I just want to say, the irony of this entire thing, it's budget-related, is that travel sports have made it impossible for the quote-unquote "normal" family to play sports anymore. And for us to not offer, this is the cheapest.
I appreciate it.
That's all, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, here are none that closes public comment. I appreciate everybody's time and getting to hear from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
For those on, on the call, we're just taking one minute. We're just getting some names and addresses from the students. We didn't, we didn't catch all of them, so we just need a minute.
I'm two one.
We had a little bit of thermal mass here. Okay. Before we move on to the approval of minutes, I just wanted to make one brief comment. I do want to state, so Barry has decided to resign from the board. He's going to spend more time with his family. I do want to extend, you know, my personal and the board's thanks for the time Barry put in and the commitment that he had on the, on the board of Ed and the impact that he had. Wish Barry best of luck and appreciate all that he's done for the district. Moving on, the approval of minutes.
No, and I got so busy that I didn't send Jack any mail.
No, and I got so busy that I didn't send Jack any mail.
Okay, just let's move on from there.
It's my fault.
That's okay.
No, I saw it on Friday, but I just, I had so much going on.
I just went through this morning with her.
Are ducks being boosted on Friday?
Yeah, they were supposed to on Friday. We will double up on the next, on the 20th.
So let's go to. Special reports and we have bill for the selectmen.
I don't think for the board should have been in this last meeting, there was anything specifically, specifically to main for the board of Ed. We were handling our own internal appropriations and things like that. And we're trying to get engaged with a charter revision council, which may have some impact on the O E. So that's pretty much it.
Any questions?
When do you expect the charter revision to be complete?
They're trying to finalize the dates now. The expectation is that. The next election cycle, not this November, but the following November would be when we actually have the down vote on it.
2024.
So we're trying to tie everything backwards from there. So I don't have the dates.
Are you putting together a committee to work on that?
Yes.
That's a formidable activity.
So the committee is going to be between five and 15 people. And again, the town attorney came into our meeting and I've got the steps here. For where it all goes in, trying to get into the election from November 23rd.
23, so that's this coming, no, that's.
Yeah. So I was right on that.
Is the board of selectmen taking volunteers for that charter committee, charter, charter revision committee?
We did talk specifically about how we're going to fill those five to 15 positions.
Can you, you did or did not?
Did not.
Okay.
So like I said, right now, we're to the point where we're trying to get this final timeline together. And then we're going to, it's going to, I don't know how many subcommittees there are because last times there were subcommittees and these subcommittees got to be. Robust enough to get work done, but not so big that it clogs everything up. So we're probably going to be dependent on the questions that we go forward with, probably more towards the 15th than the 20th.
And when was the last time it was revised?
Question.
Yeah, I was on it when I was on the board of, so I was on it probably. So it was probably 10 years ago, 20 years ago. It's about every 10 years. You, I guess, from us, it would be good that. I can, I can see if we have somebody that, if nothing else, then we will kind of, you know, answer to those votes, two separate votes. Okay. Other questions?
What do you mean by that, sir? You mean you'll?
Sometimes when you try to fill a board and you've got a limited number of people and you want somebody that's got exposure to a couple of different areas. So they, if like somebody from the board and it was also on the history of society, you know, you can get two, you know, represented, two groups to one person.
Take a check, make a check, two boxes.
You would limit the people, it's like I said, the charter, the cabinet state says you have, you can only have between 5 and 15. So that's a state mandate, so we've got kind of work within that.
So you want someone to be 20%, the 20% of the town that does 80% of the work. I mean, that's the way it always is.
That's why I've been on the board every year pretty much the last one year because this board is about the only board I think in town that haven't been on. So anyway, that'll be coming out soon. I probably our next board meeting will. Be more finalized in the details.
Sorry.
That's all right. It's going to lose, they may cancel the next one. But anyway, 15 should be our next meeting.
I doubt that, that's because of my graduation.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, and we don't have a high school student representative today, so it closes special reports and we move on to the consent agenda. So Kate, you had recommended we try to put more into the consent agenda, this is our first attempt. We'll see how it goes. So we have two items in the consent agenda. Sure. Does anyone want to make the?
Second.
Further discussion or comment? Holdings in favor?
I.
Opposed? Staying? And notes passed unanimously. So the first one for those at home was the recommend to approve. To authorize the superintendent to sign a one-year contract renewal with the school medical advisor, Dr. BJ Sickin, or period of July 1st. To June 30th. Great. Item B was to recommend approval of the proposed tuition rate. For, yeah, for out of district students attending Eastline Public School for the 2223 school year at $20,184. Which does not include special education programs, coastal connections or high school students for sale from sale. Okay, so that closes the consent agenda and we move on to the discussion and action items. First one for personnel, discussion and action, the 2022, 2023 proposed non-union unaffiliated benefit wage schedule. Turn it over to Jeff.
Okay, thanks. And Elisa just joined us.
I keep checking periodically since season.
So we, as we do each year, we develop a. An overview of the affiliated schedule for increases, which you all received. Our subcommittee of the board goes through this, so we outlined our.
So I'm not getting out the access.
Thank you.
So the, the. The attached sheet has the recommended increases. Which show the range for individuals under each of those categories. And directors, we've talked through each of those. And just a reminder, you know, minimum wage is increasing, $14 in July 1. This coming July 1 and then 15 on June 1st, 2023 and then goes up from there. So. Have you answered any questions regarding that?
Let me just ask this, sorry. We had the attached in the executive session. It wasn't attached in.
No, because. I should have clarified.
Okay.
The 2022, 2023 proposed non-union unaffiliated benefit wage schedule for the period July 1, 2022 to June.
Three, a second.
Any further discussion?
Hi.
Opposed? Staying? Motion passed unanimously.
So now we move on to discussion, action items, finance facilities and community. And the first item is discussion, action of the proposed substitute rates for the 2223 school year. Well, that's one, yeah, I'm sorry, that, yeah, we are, if, we are supposed to have that, sorry, thank you, we're supposed to discuss that at FFO, we had to cancel FFO. So we're going to defer that, so I need to get. Two-thirds agreement to amend the agenda and table that one until the 2020 to 20.
That's the second one too, or no?
No, the second one, we're good.
I would like to second the motion to table until.
I'll second that motion. Or no?
Yeah, yeah. All those in favor of deferring the topic? Hi.
Hi.
Got opposed, abstaining. Okay, so we'll modify the agenda. Thank you. So now we have, the next item is the food service financial update and recommended purchases and. Chris, I think is going to come up and lead us through that discussion.
Yeah, let me just preface. For Mr. Urban Johnson. Just a reminder for the public too, we have that many public, but. We came to you and talked about a pretty large increase in funding that we had for revenue. Food service program. There are some additional purchases too that we're looking to make bigger purchases, so I just want to make sure back around because there are some dollars and some changes.
Also reiterate that this money has to be spent in the food program. We can't spend it to fill budget gaps or.
Reading my mind, absolutely, yeah. There's specific parameters of, yeah, very specific parameters of what this can be spent on and what cannot be spent on.
And it has to be spent this year, is that?
No, no, so that's what, that's one of the changes, Kate, so I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah, that's what we're going to talk about. So Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, so we, me and Mary Ann have sat down for the last weeks and we've put out some projection numbers, what we were going to end up with at the end of the school year. Again, these are just projection numbers, so. But we are looking at significant. I guess we would go on a profit margin that's going to be in the checking account from. When we last met and we made quite a few purchases and. Probably too long to actually read the whole of this now, all the purchases we've already made to upgrades the system. But we talked about the beautification of the cafeteria line for the high school. We actually had a consultant come out. He hasn't given us back his input yet, but as soon as that does, that'll be something we can put forward. The state indicated to us now that we don't have to actually spend all the dollars by June 30th. Where we can actually just give them a projected of what we'd like to spend the money on. So and some of that could be projecting like, you know, the insurance came back much higher, so you can put in what. Those dollars might be expected to spend on insurance.
Like health insurance?
Yeah, like the health insurance for our staff. Or or if you were going to do the beautification project, we can give them a ballpark figure of what we're going to spend on that. Before you guys approve it, so it's not like you have to approve everything before, beforehand, just as long as they have an idea of what we're going to spend the money on. And again, it has to be food service related. But we, we have done a lot of upgrading. We've done multiple freezers, refrigerators, walk-in freezers. Here's another walk-in freezer right here that needs to be fixed in the idiot center because it's original, I believe, from the building. And it lasts this long, that's the thing. We're actually moving the unit outside to cut down on the new, the noise. Factor actually in that kitchen because it sounds like an airplane taking off in there when the compressor comes on. Yeah, so the new one will be moved outside. To a little concrete pad. It makes as much noise as the home air. Much, much, much different. And then we have some ovens that are probably 20, 30 years old that we're going to be upgrading. And also to give the staff more capability of producing the meals they need to produce. We're looking at the ballpark around 450,000 meals we serve this year. By the time we end in June, so. They've been feeding a lot of kids. So and that's where that revenue comes.
450,000? I just want to make sure I wrote that right.
Yeah, 450,000 meals.
This year.
This year. That's our anticipated number of meals. Yeah, so we average around 40,000 a month. Staff's been doing a fantastic job and getting all this done. Now we're just giving you more tools to be able to do this. We are still waiting to hear what next year will bring. Right now, they're saying June 30, all the current leavers are going to run out as far as everybody eating free. They are reapplying to the USDA over the summer to see if they would continue it. There's also a plan for the state to maybe step in and finance part of the free. So the USDA would pay for the free kids that usually pay for it and the state would pay for the full price kids. To maybe give another extended year, so. But we won't know and from talking to most of the experts in our board, it's, they might wait till August before they.
Should be problematic.
Yes.
Once someone has turned around and tell parents, so by the way, not your parents.
Yeah, so we do wait, wait for school and they could be like, oh, we're not going to do it and then, yeah, we have to go through the. Allocation of getting all the parents notified that.
Are we sending out warning letters?
Yeah, I was going to say.
We haven't yet. We just, we're just talking about this earlier today, whether or not, you know. I don't know if there's more clarity, but yeah, it might not be a bad idea. Yeah.
Give them a warning.
It's ending and we're uncertain what the future is.
Yeah, I do actually look down at some of my notifications on the parents, so we hear from USDA. And but that is one thing we can use some of our dollars for is to offset if we were to go back to full price. We, we wouldn't have to jump to that.
Eight, five dollars a meal.
That whatever the price is that the USDA is going to set for a full price meal. We could say we're still going to charge, you know, we could raise our price 25 cents. And then we could make up the difference with some of the funds that we have.
How much is a meal these days?
Right now, the USDA is giving us 456 for lunch and they're giving us 256, I believe, for breakfast.
Wow.
So, and we were at, and we were at our highest, we were at 350 at the high school and we were still at 275 for lunch at the elementary.
I'm, I know this doesn't have a lot to do with it, but I want to say all the years I've been on the board of Ed, the first five years, there was always a $35 to $45 deficit in the. Oh, I know, I just remember that. Whatever, whatever you've done. I remember when you came on board and Jeff was, Jeff hired you and I was like, whatever he wants, if he can fix this. So I want to say thank you to you personally, and I'm sure everyone else agrees with me, that we're, we're thrilled, the work you've done. And if there's ever anything else we can help you with or need to support you in, let us know because we'd like to do that. So thank you for turning that problem around. We really, really appreciate those of us that have been on the board that long.
It's been good. We, we started off a few years as we were in the black, so definitely. Now we're a little bit more in black.
I love black.
Yeah, yeah, a little more than we wanted to be, but it's a, definitely, it's a good problem that. Like I said, we've been able to do a lot of upgrading.
Or make a comment about the equipment. And I don't think anybody's, you know, would, would be surprised by my saying, whatever we buy now, I don't think we can expect to last 20, 30 years. And I think we need to be cognizant of that with moving forward with budgets, that things will need to be replaced sooner rather than later.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do, we do audits of the machinery. I actually have, I mean, it's coming now, refrigeration guys go through the refrigerators that, you know. And and they tell you, well, front and honest now, they, it's cheaper now to buy a unit than to. Like we had a walk-in, a reach-in refrigerator that broke that would have cost almost $3,000 to fix it, to buy new is $5,000. So it's definitely something we're ongoing with, making sure that maybe at least some kind of company comes out and looks at us, audits our equipment. Advises on what we need to fix and replace.
Well, I'm looking at this. It's a food service income statement.
Yeah.
That's the same, you exceeded by 300,000?
Right now, we're 367,000 over what we're allowed to keep in our checking account at the end of school. Which is still on to. Yeah, it's, it's three years of, like three months of carrying capacity is what the USDA allows you to have in your checking.
So that, so that means that's why we're making all these purchases.
Exactly, to knock that number down, so.
Yeah, because that will go towards our expenses.
Right.
Which will give us a higher threshold hour we can keep. Because we have no idea, if it goes back to full price, there's going to be a. Large drop in participation because you're going to have a lot of those families. Even though we put out a very good quality product, you still might lose families that. Will elect to bring lunches from home. So that's, and you know, and with the volume of doing, we've gotten away from a lot of things we were doing. We're not doing as much catering. We're not doing as much community outreach and that kind of stuff because.
You don't need to.
We just, we know, but we don't have the time. That's, and the bodies do it right now. So we would have to put a lot of those measures back in, making sure that program stays.
I'm trying to understand that number.
Yeah, exactly, that's.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, so a lot of that, a lot of that number that we want to hold on to is. For that instance, if they happen to go back. And so we could also offset some of the costs of the families by keeping our, our rates lower. As far as the daily charge for the family.
I think would be good.
We don't want to shock anybody and say, oh, it's $5 a day now.
And what percentage do we have that's low income or free or reduced? Do we have a number on that?
Yeah, yeah, that percentage still sits around 19, 18, 19%. I haven't checked it lately.
Yeah, yeah, pre, pre, we were around 12 to 15%. It's definitely gone up since. But yeah, we're still. But yeah, we're still, that'll, that'll much lower though.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions.
Okay. All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the recommended food service refrigerators for Flanders. Eleven thousand six hundred dollars, where it'd be hands, eleven thousand six hundred dollars, and the middle school, twelve thousand one hundred dollars. And a magnetic center school freezer for ten thousand four hundred and seven dollars and eighty cents.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. And further discussion?
I just wanna make one more comment. I, I mean, being in the black is obviously wonderful and all of this stuff is great. But I, I think that, you know, the biggest piece that you've brought is the fact that those programs that you were running before. Um, that, you know, is, is a part of the, the community, the, the school community that's changed. And I think that's changed for the good. I mean, everyone can, can circle around a meal. That's, that's the common, you know, and the fact that kids with their, their. You were catering sports teams with having food and all that, that's a, that makes a big difference. There's, you know, a lot less hangry people in town, thanks to you, right? So uh and that, that's for real, you know, I deal with my own kids. So that, that's a big thing. And I, and I think that obviously with the COVID thing and all of this, obviously you've all met another need where people, families really needed this. So um being in the black is great, but you know, being supportive of, of community and, and a, a community player is a big deal.
And we did get back, we did do uh a lot of football meals this year. We did, we did, we're actually doing the baseball. Uh, we did their senior day, we're gonna do their banquet next week, or the end of this week. Um, so yeah, we, we did do a little bit, not as much as we were doing, but um, and we've actually also increased our staffing in the last month. I was actually able to hire more staff finally after a year and a half of looking. Um, so that'll actually free up more uh time to be actually be, do more things and have more staffing.
I have a selfish question. Do you have any rhubarb sauce?
Actually, I just picked a whole bunch at the end of last week. And I want to maybe more rhubarb saucey.
For those of you who don't know, Flanders has rhubarb. And Chris takes the best rhubarb sauce.
Are you selling this on the black market?
I usually give you guys a sample, so I'll make sure you get a sample.
It is so good.
Yeah, and we make it in the, the actual class, the Flanders class that actually grows the garden, they have like a sampling day and they, they taste the product.
Ooh, could you ask them to give a sample?
Like I said, it was a selfish question.
Yeah, and we're actually.
I don't have a baseball player for you to cater at brunch anymore.
Well, we are gonna be actually, some of the funds we're using, uh, it's at a smaller scale, uh, it doesn't need your approval. We're gonna be expanding gardens. Um, so now you can center is gonna be uh putting in a garden this summer hopefully, and then we're gonna expand Flanders garden, so.
Excellent.
Nice.
More rhubarb?
More rhubarb, yeah.
It is so good. If you haven't had it, it is delicious.
How many curve hydrates?
Further than any other.
Sugar free.
Sorry, how much should everybody put in that?
So we have a motion on the floor in seconded, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Same. Okay. Thank you, Chris. As everybody says, you're doing a great job. I really appreciate it. Okay, um, so the last topic uh for discussion action is um was the first from last meeting. And it's the discussion of the structure of the academics, athletics, and activities committee, subcommittee. And uh this is kind of my, so to give everyone some background. So one of the things that I, you know, we've talked a lot, you know, I, the word culture keeps coming through. Finding our culture and creating a culture, um, and the importance of culture to overall how our schools and, and district operates. And uh was thinking a lot, talked with Jeff, talked with Annalise, and talked with Bill as well of AAA. And it seems like, you know, when I think about AAA, we mainly spend time on academics. We spend a little time on athletics and then probably less time on activities. And, and I thought that culture is so important. I thought of redefining the subcommittee to be academics, culture, and athletics. Um, and I think got pretty good agreement and, and thinking, uh, but I wanted to bring it to the board. Um, or thoughts, um, you know, what do I see? I see then this group going off and thinking about working with, you know, Dev and Jason. And, and ultimately, and obviously Annalise, Jeff, and then ultimately all of us to talk about defining what's the culture that we want. And, and then how do you kind of move that through and implement? Culture is really hard to change um or modify in any direction. Um, and uh it takes a lot of effort and it takes a lot of, you know, unity and working together. Um, and I thought this is an important topic to bring for uh to, to actually change AAA to be ACA rather than AKA. Um, maybe I'll pause there. And let me just see, Jeff, do you have any?
Well, I just wanna think, I just wanna add too that it's really gonna align with, you know, what we're already formulating for our goals, uh, you know, for next year. With obviously the DDI continuing, SEL, um, talking about uh hit, actually, high impact teaching. Um, so there's the academic side, um, and then the culture would be uh the fourth pillar, if you want to call it pillars. We're gonna be talking more about that as we move into the summer on for our goals for, for next year. So. I think it's, it hasn't changed. AAA has been the AAA for the last, gosh, uh, fourteen years, I think.
Since twenty fourteen.
Yeah. So.
So any initial, oh, sorry, can't see it.
Yeah, no, I think at a super high level, I think it's a really smart pivot. Um, so totally on board with um having it be uh academics, culture, and athletics. It'll take some time getting used to. But um I'm aligned with like the, yeah, exactly, the motive for, for making that change is, it feels really smart to me. I think the only thing that I would add to consider as I think through goals and kind of structure and everything. Sometimes I wonder, I feel a lot of the stuff that we will talk about and do feels very like large and broad strokes and informing us, which is really, really helpful. And I think if you kind of figure out what this is gonna look like, my push would be, I'd like to see us get more like specific and granular with focus and goals within those things. Because I think we'll have a better chance of actually accomplishing things when we get really specific and we go after bite-sized things versus like larger sweeping. Like, as you mentioned, like, what do we want our culture to look like is a really important question, but it's also probably not something that we're gonna really kind of like get down to within the course of the view. However often we have uh these committee meetings. And so um that'd be something that I'd like to see us also consider as we make this happen.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Lee, and, and completely agree in, in my thinking, just, you know, a culture, which you're right. It's, it's a big meaty topic that ends up, you know, fairly high. But if you hopefully define the culture you want, and maybe there is some values or words that you wanna drive. And then from there, you can drive, like, those are the things that we talk about, whatever that culture is. You kind of need to embed it in all the language, all the documents, everything you do, because it kind of aligns with that culture, like you said. So it's, you know, if you walk in the hallway and talk to a student, hopefully they would know in one of those. Or by whatever sound it's, you know, the whole, but then just hopefully start doing, creating goals that are all associated with the culture that you're trying to create. So hopefully it all comes together, but you're right, the culture will take a while and there might be some things that we can do in between to still have impact.
Yeah.
I think that, yeah.
No, that feels right. I think doing the vision type of work first, and then I would love to be able to say, okay, these are the three things that we're gonna win on this year.
Yep.
That will drive towards that larger vision, Mark.
Right.
How will then the activities be addressed by moving that from this?
Yeah, and, and we can, I mean. We might be, yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, part of those could be embedded in culture.
Some could.
Yeah, some, some could. Um, but maybe there's where, you know, through something that um comes up, we can always either bring it to the full board level or, you know, we can still bring it to the, the AAA committee. There's something that's.
ACA.
Yeah, and the.
I just think, you know, politically, it's, it's good to include the activities because so many of the teachers also, you know, volunteer to run clubs and organizations and other activities and things going on in the school. I just wanna make sure we're not having them think we're excluding their voice. So I, I love the change that you're talking about, but I don't wanna lose, you know, the idea that.
So ACA would be something, so academics, culture, athletics, activities.
Yeah, or some other generic, new generic title, as long as we assure everybody that.
Yeah.
It's inclusive.
Yeah.
In all of this.
And activities.
Right. Activities. Thinking, I feel like it's gonna be nested.
All activities.
That's a good idea.
Of activities, right, not, uh, that's like, it's the broader word.
Yes, to ask for the AAA committee to start working on a new name for the AAA committee.
You know, I, I think that's important though, because whenever you do something and something gets cut out, it's like someone's gonna feel. And you don't think it's important perception.
And I mean, athletics, activities, all drivers of climate and culture, right? So there's a real strong connection there. Doesn't get lost in that.
Hey, hey, Eric, quick comment online? Thanks. I wasn't sure the best way to get in there, so sorry.
Yeah, jump in.
Thanks. Um, so the idea of um kind of emphasizing and calling out culture. I, I couldn't, you know, get behind that more. I think that really makes sense. Um, I think I heard Lee like a little bit kind of talking about the, the scope almost. It's, it, it is, um, it's, it's a really big effort to target. There are so many aspects to, you know, kind of bringing that all together. Um, I, I absolutely see the, the connections or, you know, kind of crossing the pillars, if you will. Um, there's, it, it's, it is, it is so big. There's a communication thread, I think, throughout, but it, it's, you know, um. It's getting in the classrooms and getting in the schools and, and, you know, kind of pulling those pieces together. And I think, I, as I think about it, you know. There are, you know, I think you kind of can be able to sort of measure, you kind of put the things that you're gonna execute against it. Like, again, like we were saying, you know, here's our, we, we have these big goals, but then, you know, we're gonna move the needle by doing X, Y, and Z. And I, I, I don't know, and I guess I would ask the people in the, on the existing committee, like, do we have like the bandwidth to expand the scope? Um, to, you know, to include the, you know, something as kind of large as culture.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely let the Lee, Laura, and Bill comment. I think from my perspective, what I've seen in talking to Tim um prior is that we've struggled to think a little bit with AAA. And defining what AAA does and focused on. And I think we've had some, we've had times, I think, at AAA meetings where there's presentations at AAA and then we repeat them at Board of Ed. And so people feel like I sat through an hour and a half or hour at AAA and then we repeat it. So I think it, I think um from the feedback that I've heard is that providing some, a little more direction and clarity. Um, may be actually helpful. Um, it's a, it's a good point, Elisa, but I'll let Laura, Bill, and, and Lee, who are on it, comment.
I'm actually excited at the prospect of a refresh. I think like the concern about scope definitely resonates. And I think the AAA meetings that I've been up in, I've only been on this committee for several months now. So I'll also defer to what you guys think here, but I, I, I always find the meetings to be incredibly informative. The topics are always very relevant, and I don't always feel like I know my charge or what we're going after at like a larger level. It's always very interesting, really fruitful discussions, but I couldn't, if someone said like, what are the top three things that you guys are working towards of AAA? I wouldn't be able to name those off the top of my head. And so I think by doing a bit of a refresh and a rebrand and thinking about culture in a more expansive way, I actually think we could, we have the potential to get more done if we go about restructuring in the right way.
And I think like that's what, when people think about, you know, the district, culture is, you know, one of, like, that's, that's defining, right? So I think that um, you, you know, beyond, beyond this group, you know, when you are, you know, reflecting on your district, that's sort of. The piece that is gonna, is gonna resonate is the culture, so kind of bringing those pieces together. And, and I, and you know, it, it does, does fit with the pillars. I'm thinking like, you know, what do you think about the district? Well, it's, it's activities, athletics, culture, like they, they all go hand in hand. And if you, you know, hear any like district, um, uh, community members or uh, you know, uh, people that work in the district. Or I think those are the kind of, um, the input that you're gonna get back is around the perception of culture. And I think kind of gaining alignment and, and, and moving forward with direction and purpose is, I think that's a, that's a really good for us to be in.
Thanks, Elisa. Uh, Jamie.
So I've liked everything that I've heard, but I'm gonna turn the table and put my policy hat on, because you know how I like my policy hat. Um, if we could get maybe the AAA ACA committee, whatever it ends up being, to have as like one of their first agenda items to come up with their charge.
Yep.
So that when we get into that nine thousand series.
Yep.
We can have something to put on that, because that's coming up soon. And if we can work it together, that would be really, really awesome. Um, because if we're changing the name of the committee, we're obviously gonna change the charge.
Yep.
Um, so they can work on that at one of their first meetings. That would be really helpful for the policy committee to have that.
Perfect. Jamie, completely aligned. So if, um, one second, okay. So once we, if we get broad agreement that we want to move in this direction, then there is, it will be a charge to the triple, current AAA. The, because I can't remember the policy number, but it does list out the three.
Nine, one, two, three.
Yeah, that, that lists out the three um. Goals or mission or whatever for the AAA, so we need to redefine that. And you can also redefine ACA or ACA or whatever. You, you guys can uh come up with some rules on that. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to say that when we had opened my public comment, that was the thing that we kept hearing over and over and over again. It was all about the culture, all about the activities, all about who we are as a system and how we support it. So I think it's, it's a good move and we're doing the right thing.
Excellent. Thanks, Kate. Okay, so um, there's no, I don't think there's a motion or any.
There is a motion.
There is, if we wanted to change.
There is, but I would actually like to change it a little bit if I could. Can I make a statement? I would like to make a motion to modify the structure of the AAA subcommittee of the board to reflect a change to include culture. To be discussed by the current committee members.
Can you say that one more time?
A motion to modify the structure of the AAA commit, subcommittee of the board to reflect a change of the addition of cultural. I'm gonna try it again without my tongue getting in the way. I would like to make a motion to modify the structure of the AAA subcommittee of the board to reflect the addition of the language culture to be.
Incorporated.
Incorporated, and for the AAA committee to come up with their new policy charge.
What did you?
Policies and practice, charge, their new charge.
Further discussion, yeah, no.
Yeah, I have further discussion. I'm not.
I'm willing to change it. I just was trying to.
No, Jamie, I think your ideas are very valid and right on, right on target, but I think we're being a little too quick in renaming it. I think it's more important.
That's why I said the meeting come together.
Because you could add community to it. You could add culture. You could add so many other things and maybe we can come up with some bigger picture. Keep it simple. So I, I, I know I'm not ready to vote on a name change.
Well, I think, that's why I didn't, I said to reflect the culture.
She, yeah, I was, I was interpreting that as we were supposed to come up with a name that includes.
It's basically can we get back to AAA?
Yeah, to, to sort out with a proposal, you, you would come with a proposal to us or recommendation to the Board of Ed.
I wasn't really, I was basically kicking it to them to come back.
Oh, thank you. Suggesting that culture be incorporated into the discussion conversation.
Thanks. Bill?
No, I, I just had a question regard, regarding, are, are we still doing?
No, I, I, I just had a question regard, regarding, are, are we still doing the retreat thing? Is that, or has that been tabled or?
We're gonna, uh.
Yeah, 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 I'm just, I'm just thinking that, you know, as someone who's been potential, or may in a minute. Be charged for the task, I just.
The short is, we're probably gonna defer the, uh, retreat, but we'll come back to that in superintendent.
You were shaking over here.
So we have a motion and we have a second, any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, staying.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so motion passes. So, uh, Bill, we can talk more as you kind of start thinking about it, and we can get something scheduled.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know. For renaming and putting together, uh, uh, we want it to be all lined up with the rest of what we're doing. So to start working on that with, prior to, you know, maybe this retreat. Or at least further conversations would not be, I think we'd be getting going too quickly on that. So I want to make sure we're. I, I love the idea. And obviously, this is something that, as we talk about it, you know. Looking at our current culture, identifying what's wonderful about it, identifying where it needs to change. Is, is involving everybody, everybody, everybody. So, um, you know, I certainly don't want to draft something up that looks like it's coming. That, you know, the board's got this culture thing that we're sending down the road here. And I, I, I want it to be worded in such a way that we're, you know, taking a look at it, identifying the positive aspects. And identifying what we want to work on, not certainly don't want to.
Okay, so we will close, uh, the discussion and action items for tonight. And we will move on to the administrative reports, Jeff.
Yeah, so follow up with the, the retreat, yeah, Eric, I talked a little bit before, I thought it might be wise, um, to wait a little bit, we'll hold off. So much is going on this month of June. We're trying to kind of get this date set. We tried multiple times, and it would have been June twentieth. But maybe hold off until later in the summer, we could tie in next year's goals. Um, we'll probably have a, a Board of Ed, um, member replacement, you know, for, for Barry. And that way we've got a full board again, so maybe wait until, you know, end of July or early August to, to do that. So we'll still lock in Betty Osko, um, you're never supposed to talk to her, so I'll just.
We're gonna move it to Block Island then, right?
We'll, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, well, no, I, I can, I can come back.
I know something's trickier, but it's kind of, but, uh, we'll see what he does. Important, and see how, how long it takes you for us to have another board. So that's that. Other items, so the baseball field, just be, uh, clear, in case anybody gets a up close look. You know, the, the baseball field, you started to see green, okay?
Some of its weeds I saw.
So that's not what's supposed to be growing on there right now. So the problem that we are at right now, I know Chris, um, wants to hear your time, but we are waiting for a valve so we can hook up the water. We haven't been able to lay the seed down yet, because we, the watering is not in place. We don't wanna, we don't wanna do that final step until we have water ready to go to, to water, especially now that we're in June. So this, this valve has been on, it's like a two inch valve of some sort that is on back or the waves, we can hook up the final, um, water line.
This may sound ridiculous, but I don't know much about growing grass or whatever. But if we got all these weeds kind of stealing all the topsoil that we just put down there, when we go to put the grass down. How do you separate the weeds from, can we like cover all this with black plastic or something now? So it's not gonna be filled with, I, I don't know, there's gotta be.
Well, what, what Chris.
I'm just thinking about my own yard. Shaking the dirt out of all.
Strip it all down again, and then they have to basically come through and cut all that somehow, or did you, you know, run a grader over of some sort?
Yeah, but we don't, I'm assuming we just paid or got a bunch of topsoil to be.
I don't know if the final layer is.
There is some grass there.
No, I just, I, I, but you, we wanna, you wanna start with a clean slate, I think. Not with a bunch of weeds and weed seeds or whatever in there that are gonna.
And I don't know if, the longer we go, the hotter it gets. We, do we wait until?
We shouldn't be, it's too late. Just trying to grow some at my, my house, uh, right now. And, and we are in the middle of weed season, so it's, it's so hard.
So when does baseball start playing in that field?
Wouldn't be until next spring. Yeah, so we have all.
It'll grow, if we plant it in September, it, it'll, by the end of September, you're gonna have a full field of grass.
We have to make sure we eliminate the weed problem, otherwise they'll continue.
Yes, yep, okay, just certain type.
Okay, so they can come in with the weed control after you grow the grass and take care of the weeds. At least my personal experience, uh, very recently is they can, uh, because we're in that exact battle right now.
I, I will talk to Chris, we meet tomorrow.
Baseball field that wouldn't quit.
And then just the, the la, the last thing, just to, uh, remind you two about next. But, um, we've got middle school promotion, uh, Tuesday night, um, the fourteenth. Um, on the high school turf field again, as we did last year, so we're excited about that. Um, so Dev and Jason have worked, uh, you know, together on getting that set up, which I think is gonna go well. Um, so six o'clock, six o'clock from middle school. Uh, yep, and then, uh, high school the next night at five thirty, so you're all obviously invited and.
Did you say gates open at four?
Four, four thirty? Four o'clock?
Does anyone need my ticket? Or does anyone have a senior that needs a ticket? I'll get my ticket.
Unless we have it indoors.
No, for the high school. I'm sorry.
To it, because if it rains, then I'll, I'll, I'll take it.
I didn't get a ticket. I, I got the envelope and the nice invitation, but no ticket. Rich got one, I didn't get.
But no, it's gonna be outdoors, you don't have to worry about tickets. Senior dinner dance this Thursday, some other good things going. We sure are, yeah, absolutely fast, next Tuesday. Kids go to Salem, kids go to our elementary schools. The elementary schools are ready to go, so it's great to get that activity back. Have you said that the high school kids are excited about it?
So they're walking through the elementaries?
Kids get in the hallway and line the hallways. So it's good to have that back. So we're back to normal.
And are we back project graduation?
I'm signed up to hand out goodie bags that night. I did that last year. This year I just volunteered to hand out.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's crazy as everybody's winding down, you know, um, my office is ramping up. Um, transitioning to summer, summer programming for students, but also, um, planning for curriculum teams to come in this summer. Top is June sixteenth, right after school gets out for all of our, um, folks who have signed up for curriculum work this summer. Been engaged in, uh, end of year summative meetings with the building principals, talking about, you know, their goals and reflecting with them. I know that they're doing the same with their teachers, wrapping all of that work up. Today was a great little event for our, um, team folk. So these are, are our first and second year teachers who are engaged in the team process, which is, you know, um, mandatory for any new Connecticut teacher. So we graduated five year two teachers today, so, you know, they officially got their little certificate. And we didn't do graduation caps, but, you know, we had a nice crew day and just some time together to celebrate their successes. The team program is robust and challenging for teachers. And I said to them, it would be robust and challenging for any teacher, but for a new year, a new teacher. In, um, the wake of COVID and all of the complications that come with that. I mean, really kudos to them. They, they've been hanging in there. Their mentors have been great. We have a great selection of mentors in district who do a phenomenal job with our NITs. So I really felt it necessary to celebrate that success. So we did that this afternoon under the trees in front of central office is a really cute event. And, you know, just participating in all of the end of year activities, my first year in East Line. And I'm, I am, you know, was at the musical over the weekend, band concerts, chorus concerts. Um, elementary school concerts and going to go to the dinner dance this week and, or, oh yeah, junior, I've been everywhere. Taking it all in, and it's, it's really, it's been amazing. The experiences that we create and provide for our students here is phenomenal, honestly. And, uh, administration does a great job organizing, and, uh, I think our students benefit greatly from all of those. Just as much as they do from academics and curriculum planning, so probably more so.
I could have to the high school, that performance this weekend was great.
Yeah, it was really, send up some really, really talented individuals.
During up for year end, so that's with Annalise, my fun just starts now. Year end and next, you know, uh, getting the next year's budget out to, uh, to the schools, um.
You want to share about the gate component?
Yeah, um. Talk about it at FFO, so the athletic has gone with GoFan so that no more cash for tickets. So it's really nice, we don't have any issues with, yeah, it's fantastic. And, um, when I talked with Terry today, just about, you know, what happens if someone doesn't have a phone or can't figure it out. So they're there, they're helping, like she used her phone to help someone get tickets. Sixty-five and over here is, is free, so we don't have to worry about, you know, anyone that may, you know, like I said, what about my mother that has a flip phone? That, uh, you know, that they're free. So I, I think it's great, eliminates the cash and the internal control, you know, just everything. So it's a lot easier than we reviewed, you know, reconciliation with the, the reports. So I think it's a, a great.
You know, we had the, um, the season passes.
That's all through GoFan as well. Yeah, she said it was great, so then it eliminates some of the issues they had with, you know, twenty people coming in on one season pass kind of thing. Pretty much, yeah, a lot of the, um, school districts, ECC uses it, you know, uh, so it, it works well. I, I got my tickets for an event this weekend, it was quite simple.
And, and we at FFO had talked for a while of trying to control. I think you were part of those, trying to control cash is really hard. Um, and so we put in procedures, Mariana helped drive a lot of that to try to help secure. And be safe, but cashless is much better.
High school and, um, middle school are, um, will be with, uh, the same bank we use. Our, um, accounts setup, we're moving to remote deposit for any checks that come through. So the deposits will go through, I, we have a, that central office, but remote deposits, so no more, you know, driving to the bank for checks. And things like that, they just get deposited remotely, money's in the bank quickly, so, um, it's working well.
And can we get cashless on other things as well, like?
Yep, so we're work, um, I don't know about concession, we're working with, we, we can at some point, but we're working right now to get like high school fees. Through infinite campus, um, we have to, we were waiting to switch banks, now that we've done that, we're hoping to do that for the next, for the fall. Um, I don't know that the middle school has many fees. Um, the only other cash that might come through would be like field trips and things. So I'm not sure, you know, we can certainly put that, we're gonna, just with the high school. We can probably put that on, um, with the middle school as well, so. I love to do that and concessions, I mean, I think eventually we certainly can, I just don't.
Yeah, let's keep. Yeah, we, yeah, great. Thanks, Mariana. For, for finance people, this is very exciting. Okay, so that closed administrative, should reports, committee reports. FFO was canceled, I don't think we've had a triple A, and we already discussed the personnel policy committee on it. Billy, I think we're all set there. So that moves on to board comments.
I have a miracle league update, so we have two games left to our season, um, the twelfth and the nineteenth. If anyone wants to come out and watch some games, um, they start at ten fifteen. They are amazing to watch, if you want to be a buddy, we'd love for you to be a buddy to my daughter buddies, Jeff's daughter buddies. I don't know who else, there's a bunch of, the whole baseball team buddies. It's a great experience, it's fun to watch, come out one Sunday, ten fifteen and watch all these kids play baseball, it's amazing. But I just wanted to give everybody an update of some of our upcoming events. Um, June eighteenth starts our Take a Kid Sailing Day, uh, the Miami Bay dot com. You have people who will vote to volunteer to take kids out. Um, it's a great experience for kids who've never been out. Um, on June twenty fourth, we have a fundraiser at the Norwich Sea Unicorns. On June twenty fifth, we are having a Harry Potter event for our kids, um, on the field sponsored by T-Force. Um, July sixteenth is celebrating Slime Day, we'll have a booth full of information. Um, August eighth starts a week long I can bike program. August fifteenth starts our, a week long I can kayak program at Three Bells Marina. Um, September twenty fourth, we're gonna do Oyster Fest. And we have a July seventeenth game up at the Hartford Yard Goats, and on August twentieth, we're doing Family Day at Camp Hartness. So we have lots of fun stuff coming up this summer for all the kiddos, so if you wanna come to a game, let me know. Dave Putnam, I work at Rec, he has tickets to most of these too, um, one of us know, and come to a game, come support the Miracle League. The kids will love to see you, and you'll have a great time watching the kids.
Is there total monetary or funds raised?
I don't have it on me, um, we were actually just had a meeting Thursday. We are currently at two hundred thousand in our current spending towards buying and putting together and building our, um. Concession bathroom shed, um, and then it's the playground after that.
And it's all the same. And is that sign new, or did I just?
We have all new signage. We have all new signage.
Okay, I like the new.
We have all new signage on the road and on the field.
Okay. Real nice.
And for those who don't know, we also have basketball courts.
Yep.
From Kevin Ollie, yep.
Other board comments.
I mean, speaking of dollar amounts in basketball, we got a lot of feedback this evening about middle school sports. Jeff, I don't know if this is possible, but I'm curious, like I realized I don't actually know what the price tag is for those, so if that could be included in like the next complete update, um, it would be helpful to know.
Yeah, yeah, I was curious uh how we wanted to, knew that hanging or what we wanted to do with that. So um, definitely put that in the Friday update with the, with the breakdown of that.
Eric, do you mind if I make a comment?
Oh, no, please, go ahead, Candace.
Oh, great, thank you, um, and thank you for allowing me to zoom in tonight, I appreciate that, I'm juggling kids everywhere. Um, first, I'd like to thank everyone for incredible year, it's been challenging to say the least, and I'm very, very proud of the Eastline School District for striving to be the very best that we can be. Um, second, I'd like to give a very large shout out and heartfelt thank you to our Vikes for Vets Committee on facilitating the Field of Honor. Um, I'm hoping that each board member going in tonight, and if not, you didn't notice, take a walk over to the field. Please look at the flags that are uh displayed, it is an absolutely outstanding display of honor. Um, and it, it really did take my breath away when I saw it, I'm certain that this will continue to grow each year. Um, and it's really, really fantastic, so kudos to that entire committee. Um, thirdly, I will just caveat on what Lee stated, we had quite a few visitors uh tonight. That I have to say really made some very good points, very strong points. Um, and I would like to see the breakdown as far as funding um and that type of thing and, and maybe some options and, and having a little bit more of a discussion on it if we can. So thank you all.
Great, thanks, thanks Candace, and you know, it's funny, you mentioned the, the flag, but I had taken, I was in Boston and took pictures, there's um some phenomenal, it was originally in the Seaport, I think. Maybe it's still there, but they moved it to the common and there's flags for all the servicemen from, I think it's from Massachusetts and it's, it's very. Kinda, it kinda takes your breath away when you see the sea of flags, and I took a picture and I was uh gonna share it with Jeff and say, shouldn't we do something like that here? And then this was done, so um, I, I do think it's, it's great and appreciate Candace for bringing that up. Uh, other board comments?
Do you still have a need for?
We do have a need for executive session. Yeah, so we will um. So we take a five minute break and then come in and take a motion to go into executive session.
It's up to you.
Or we take a motion, go on.
Take a break or go straight into executive session?
Why don't we uh, let's take a, let's, let's take a few minute break and then we'll move into executive session to. Discuss the performance evaluation of the superintendent as well as the employment contract of the superintendent. So let's take a few minute break and then we'll uh come back together. Thanks, everyone.